I would like to call the city council meeting for January 9, 2019 to order. At this time, we're going to have a moment of silence, but you know, this is the National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and I think it's important to understand not only how much we appreciate all the individuals that really, not only first responders, but those that risked their lives in our law enforcement. We're going to be recognizing some new officers this evening, but how important they are to our community and how solid they are and their families. And in that sense, let's take a moment of silence to recognize them and remember them. A moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Alderman Gripp, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance? Thank you, Alderman Gripp. I want again to wish you a good evening, and as we begin this meeting of our city council, I would again like to welcome all of you here and all of those in attendance and all of those who are viewing the meeting on television or on the internet. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, and please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region by way of our TV broadcast. We are happy that you're participating in your city government and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your cellphones and other electronic handheld devices as they can interfere with the audio system and be disruptive here in the chambers. If you wish to address the council on a specific item on the discussion agenda, you are encouraged to do so during that discussion item. You will also have an opportunity to address the city council under public with business portion, which will occur towards the end of the meeting. When addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself, and speak to the council as a body and not to any single member. We'll ask that you limit your remarks to no more than five minutes. I ask that everyone observe, and I know you all will, the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. So again, thank you all for being here. Right now, would the city clerk please call the roll?
Ambrose.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Rossen.
Here.
Dickman.
Tompkins.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Clul.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
And Dunn.
Here.
Nine present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. And will an Alderman move the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting for December 12, 2018?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. We now, if there, is there a city administrator update this evening?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. We have two proclamations this evening. The first one is a Van Buren Park Neighborhood Association being a recognized neighborhood, and as we do that, let's make sure I got the right one here. Yep. Alderman Dunn is going to read that proclamation. Oh, hold on a minute. Let me check again. Well, we don't have it right here on the list, but let's do that. We have the committee, the whole also, that we did last, through approval of that as well, the minutes of the council committee, the whole meeting. Is there a motion to approve those?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. Those pass. Now, we will move on to two proclamations. One is a recognized neighborhood for Van Buren Park Neighborhood Association, and Alderman Dunn will lead that, address that proclamation.
Thank you, Your Honor. The proclamation reads, "Whereas the Davenport 2025 Comprehensive Plan identifies neighborhoods as the basic building blocks of the city, and whereas the Van Buren Park Neighborhood Association has defined themselves as the area of northwest First Street, east to South Pine, south to Blackhawk Street, west to south Elmwood Avenue in Davenport, Iowa, and whereas the Van Buren Neighborhood Park Association has established bylaws in accordance with the city's neighborhood recognition policy, and whereas the Van Buren Neighborhood Association has provided the city and will maintain accurate contact information for the leadership of their organization, and whereas the Van Buren Neighborhood Park Association will schedule and publicize regular public meetings to encourage the involvement of their neighbors, and whereas the Van Buren Park Neighborhood Association has shown a desire and capacity to partner with the city to improve the quality of life within the neighborhood of Davenport. Now, therefore, we, Frank Klipsch, Mayor, and the City Council, the City of Davenport, Iowa, encourage all citizens participate in their neighborhood association, and on January 9, 2019, do hereby and proclaim Van Buren Park Neighborhood Association as a recognized neighborhood." And I move the proclamation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Great, thank you. And I think we have Jeff Banks is going to be accepting this this evening. Is Jeff here? Thank you, Jeff. Thanks for all the work you have. Let's stand around. Okay. It's great. Thank you. and Alderman Tompkins is going to lead that proclamation process.
Thank you, Your Honor. Whereas everyone remembers someone special, a neighbor, teacher, relative, or friend who broadened our horizons and brought purpose to our lives, and whereas these special individuals singled us out and volunteered their time to help us become engaged and stay on the right track to success, and whereas every adult has something to offer a child, and every child has something to offer to our community, and whereas research has shown that children engaged in healthy and safe one-to-one mentoring relationships are more likely to graduate high school, avoid incarcerations, and avoid delinquent behavior, and whereas there are a significant number of vulnerable children in our community who need and want to positive, want a positive role model in their lives, and whereas our city embraces the concept of engaging volunteers to mentor children of promise in our community, and whereas, and now therefore, we, Frank Klipsch, Mayor and City Council of Davenport, Iowa, do hereby proclaim January 2019 as National Mentoring Month, and encourage all citizens, businesses, public and private agencies, and religious and educational institutions to support mentoring and give young people in our community the gift of time and friendship through big brothers, big sisters dated this ninth day of January 2019. I move this proclamation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign.
Thank you. And I think tonight, we're going to have Drew Huff, who's a big brother, and his little brother Cameron, who's going to come up and accept this. If they would come on up? of neighborhoods, and as we're looking to bring our community together and provide support for young people, the neighborhood is extremely important. Secondarily, the mentoring that all of us can be part of, and big brothers and big sisters are an active part of as well, that's extremely important to provide kids role models, somebody they can look up to, and somebody they can turn to. So it's exciting to have both of those here tonight, and thank you guys for being big brother and big sister, I mean, big brother and little brother this evening. So thank you. The next we're going to do, we have one presentation, and it's a, really, this is one of the more exciting, fun things I get to do as part of my role as mayor. We're going to be swearing in some police officers this evening, so I'm going to come around and work with the chief, and we'll do that.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. Just a quick update on where we're at. Wanted to let you know that the eight officers that we're going to be swearing in this evening, we hired them in August of 2018. They spent 16 weeks at the Law Enforcement Academy in Des Moines, and Sunday, they'll be starting our four-and-a-half to five-month-long field training officer program. So as of Sunday, all of you and our community members will be seeing these police officers on the streets here in Davenport, and I'm just, I couldn't be prouder of them. They're all doing very well. And to get things going, Mayor, if you're ready to start?
I am ready.
All right. So the first one we're going to, we're going to address here is Police Officer Mary Cameron. Mary grew up in Davenport, Iowa. She graduated from Davenport West High School in 2009. Mary attended Blackhawk College and obtained her associate's degree as well as a certificate in massage therapy. She was a massage therapist from 2012 to 2018. She owned her own massage therapy business in Davenport before choosing to pursue her dream career in law enforcement. In her free time, she loves to run, lift weights, and spend time with her friends and family, and her father, Clifton Peters, will be pinning her badge.
Aye, Mary Cameron.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties of a police officer.
Discharge all duties of a police officer.
Of the City of Davenport.
Of the City of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now and hereafter as required by law.
Congratulations. She is wearing a vest, though, so you know. Police Officer Michael Katton. Michael was raised in Sheffield, Illinois. He graduated from Bureau Valley High School in 2011. After high school, he attended Blackhawk College in Moline for a semester, and then Ashford University in Clinton for a year, working towards his degree in physical education. In 2013, Michael joined the United States Marine Corps and served as an intelligence specialist for five years. During his time with the Marine Corps, Michael was stationed in Marine Corps Air Station New River in Jacksonville, North Carolina, and on Quantico Marine Corps Base in Quantico, Virginia. He deployed on the 24th Marine Expeditionary Unit from December 2014 to July 2015. He was honorably discharged in July of 2018, and as you know, he was hired in August of 2018, so we jumped right on him. His fiancee Samantha will be pinning his badge. I state your name.
I, Michael Katton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Of the City of Davenport.
Of the City of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations. Martine grew up in Davenport, Iowa. He graduated from Davenport West High School in 2012. He then received a bachelor's degree from Western Illinois University, Quad Cities Campus. He worked as a security officer with Global Security Services while attending Western Illinois and completed an internship with Rock Island County Sheriff's Office. After graduating, he worked as a correctional officer at the Scott County Jail. While at the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy, he received the 300-point Club Award for physical fitness. His brother Miguel will be pinning his badge.
I state your name.
I, Martine Gonzalez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Of the City of Davenport.
Of the City of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now and hereafter as required by law.
Congratulations. Nick grew up in Plainfield, Illinois. He graduated from Plainfield South High School in 2013. He then attended St. Ambrose University on a football scholarship and studied criminal justice. In 2017, Nick graduated from St. Ambrose with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. He continued his studies at St. Ambrose, obtaining a master's degree in criminal justice in 2018. His girlfriend Katie will be pinning this badge.
I state your name.
I, Nicholas Mark.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Of the City of Davenport.
Of the City of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Police Officer Skylar Mitchell. Skylar grew up in Dixon, Illinois, and graduated from Dixon High School in 2014. He was a two-sport athlete in high school and college. Following graduation, Skylar attended St. Ambrose University, where he earned a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Skylar was a four-year varsity runner in cross-country and track and field for St. Ambrose. He completed an internship at the Work Release Center and the Residential Correctional Facility. Skylar resides in Davenport. In his spare time, he enjoys being outdoors and running, and his mother, Michelle, will be pinning his badge.
I state your name.
I, Skylar Mitchell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
To discharge all duties of a police officer.
The City of Davenport.
The City of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now and hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Police Officer Skylar Mitchell. Skylar grew up in Dixon, Illinois, and graduated from Dixon High School in 2014. He was a two-sport athlete in high school and college. Following graduation, Skylar attended St. Ambrose University, where he earned a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Skylar was a four-year varsity runner in cross-country and track and field for St. Ambrose. He completed an internship at the Work Release Center and the Residential Correctional Facility. Skylar resides in Davenport. In his spare time, he enjoys playing baseball, football, and other sports with his family and friends, and his father, Robert, will be pinning his badge.
I state your name.
I, Robert Cormier.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
In the City of Davenport.
In the City of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations. Thank you. Jared grew up in Walcott. He graduated from Davenport West High School in 2015. He then joined the Volunteer Fire Department in Walcott, where he has worked for the past three years. He attended the University of Dubuque as a double major in criminal justice and sociology. He is currently 16 credits away from completing his degrees, and is continuing his education online while working for the City of Davenport, and his mother, Lisa, will be pinning the badge.
I state your name.
I, Jared Crow.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Iowa.
Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Of the City of Davenport.
Of the City of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Police Officer Andrew DeNoyer. Andrew moved to Davenport from Hersher, Illinois, when he was 12 years old. He graduated from Davenport North High School in 2016. During high school, Andrew was student body president, class president, student ambassador, and a student school board member, as well as elementary school tutor at local Davenport schools. After high school, he attended Scott Community College, where he received his associate's degree in 2018. In his free time, Andrew enjoys going to events in the community, as well as hiking, boating, and camping with his family and friends. Andrew's fiancee, Kelsey, will be pinning his badge.
I, Andrew DeNoyer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all duties as a police officer.
Of the City of Davenport.
The City of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now and hereafter required by law.
Congratulations. Just real quick for council, on Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, I want you to know how much we appreciate your support, and with these eight officers, again, this brings us up to full authorized strength for the City of Davenport. So thank you. I just wanted to note as well, Andrew, as an example, Andrew DeNoyer, was a member of our Citizens Academy, and that's a program we have where individuals in our community can learn all about the individual components of city government over a nine-week program, meets on one night a week, and I'm excited, not only this is our first graduate of the academy, of the Citizens Academy, to become a police officer, but I've been, obviously, interviewed a lot of people for boards, commissions, and committees, and we're seeing lots and lots of people that have gone through that, who are participating. So we hope you'll all consider that. We'll have a new class coming up as we move forward soon. So thank you all, and congratulations, all the officers and their families. We're now going to move on to petitions and communications from the council and myself. Is there anybody have any ideas or comments they want to make this evening? Alderman Clul.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to announce a community meeting that I will be hosting on January 14. That's this Monday at 5:30. It's going to be held at the Public Works Center on 46th Street. The topic of the community meeting is the proposed rezone of 5.93 acres north of 58th and east of Utica Ridge. So again, that will be Monday, the 14th, at 5:30 at the Davenport Public Works Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Clul. Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just another reminder of our third ward meeting, which will be Saturday, January 12, at Cedar Memorial Christian Church. We'll be talking with Finance Director Brandon Wright about budgeting and how the city does that, as we head into, as a council, our budget planning cycle, which begins on January 19. So please join us if you'd like on Saturday, whether you live in the third ward or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Honor. Had a great fourth ward meeting last night at the Fairmont Library. The library staff did an incredible job, great crowd, and I want to thank Captain Jane Emming and Brian Shat. They did a great job explaining neighborhood safety and some of the wonderful projects that we had last year and completed, so everybody was happy and we had a lot of fun. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Mallory Merritt, could you come up just a moment, please? You know, we-
You know, we have a lot of staff and have birthdays, but when we're lucky enough to have the birthday on a meeting night, we ought to recognize that, so let's all join and sing, Mallory, Happy Birthday. Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday, dear Mallory, happy birthday to you. Thank you, Mallory, for all the great work you do, we appreciate that. Now, we're going to move on to some individual items for approval on the discussion agenda. First is the third consideration for ordinance case number ORD eighteen zero five, request of the City of Davenport to repeal and replace Title Seventeen of the Davenport Municipal Code entitled zoning by adopting a new zoning ordinance and map, amending Titles Two and Fourteen, in order to make administrative changes to support, to the support of the new code. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this? Seeing no one. It's moved and seconded. I think we have a possible amendment to that first?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Yes, as everyone on council is aware, the green sheets were updated since last committee of the whole meeting last Wednesday with the additional details, so I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we go ahead and approve the amendments to the zoning ordinance. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign, and that passes. Thank you.
Now, we're going to vote on the original, the original item, the third consideration. We'll have a roll call, any aldermen have anything to say on this? Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor, first off, you know, this has been a process that's gone on over two years, and our staff has done an incredible job, and, you know, as people find out some of the changes, they might have some concerns, and, you know, we can be very flexible, if you have some issues, all you have to do is contact the City of Davenport, our administration staff, and we can work, work through things, but it was an incredible process, and, you know, our zoning process, since I've been on the council, has always been very open and transparent, and I've been very proud of our process, and we're always working to make it better, so thanks, staff.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Alderman Grip.
Thank you, Your Honor, and I'll probably be reiterating some of Alderman Ambrose sentiments here, but I do want to say that this was something that was very much needed, and I hope the people of Davenport realize how big of a deal this is. This will be the ordinance that shapes what our city looks like in the next ten and twenty years, and I think we have done a nice job, and a lot of that credit goes to our staff who went parcel by parcel, looking at things, contacting owners, and really doing the diligence over months and almost two years, right? Very long time, so, nice effort, I'm sure you guys maybe are having a party after this meeting tonight if it passes, but congratulations, thank you for your effort, Camero's was great to work with as well, I think they were the right team to hire, and I'm looking forward to having this new ordinance pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Grip. Alderman Rossen.
Thank you, Your Honor, quick question, Bruce, for the conversation we've been having regarding the property on Oneida, it occurred to me to ask, there won't be any future charge for that property to be updated, for the zoning code to be changed in the future? There's no cost?
Is that the, oh, sorry, Bruce Burger, Community Planning and Economic Development, is that the downzoning if they choose to downzone?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's certainly something we can accommodate.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Generally speaking, what I think staff has talked about is batching some changes as they come forward, so certainly that might be the better environment to bring.
So there won't be a charge for that to an individual? Okay, is that okay, Alderman McGinnis? Very good.
Thank you, Alderman Rossen. Alderman Mattson.
Thank you, Your Honor, I just want to say thanks, we had to appease the Planning and Zoning Commission, and thanks to the mayor and the council getting together and talking with them yesterday, and we agreed to do more of that so that we understand each other, and that was a really good discussion, and just to let everybody know, we've committed to talk more and to understand the issues better, and thanks to the mayor and the council for putting that together. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Mattson. Anybody else? Seeing no one, we'll call a roll call, please.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Rossen.
Yes.
Tomkins.
Yes.
Grip.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Clul.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
And Dunn.
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, and that ordinance is adopted. Our next item is the first consideration of ordinance for case number REZ eighteen sixteen, request of Rob Davis with Bush Construction to rezone 5.93 acres, more or less of property located north of East Fifty-Eighth Street and east of Utica Ridge Road from CO Office Shop District to R-five M Medium Density Residential District. Is there anyone from the public that wants to speak on this? Come on up, please, and name and address, please.
My name is Larry Southwick, and I live at forty-twenty East Fifty-Ninth Street, which is just across the street on Utica Ridge on the west side for the proposed change in the zoning is going to be. I've been at this location fifteen years, and I have numerous concerns on this proposed rezoning. One would be increased traffic flow, water runoff, and increased population density. However, since I only have five minutes to state my concerns, I will focus on my major concern, and that is the height of the building under the requested rezoning. The current zoning restricts the height to twenty-five, that just changed with your vote, the new zoning ordinance on which I believe you were voting tonight, but you have, changed that from C-one to CT. This will allow buildings up to a height of thirty-five feet. As a means of comparison, the Wells Fargo Building and the American Bank Building just down the street are thirty-nine point three feet tall. The zoning request of Bush Construction to R-five M would allow them to build a structure up to ninety feet. It is also my understanding that new zoning regulations would change this to RMF, which would have a height limit of seventy feet. So in effect, if this rezoning is approved, anyone could build a building on this area up to a height of seventy feet. In comparison, the Rhythm City Casino is seventy-eight point six feet, so a new structure would be built within nine feet of that height, or could be. I, for one, do not think that buildings of this height have any place in our neighborhood, as most structures in this area are two stories and a few at three. The City of Davenport spent a considerable amount of money, time, and effort in coming up with new zoning regulations. This project started back in March of 2017 and is close to being approved, which has been approved tonight. I have looked into the new proposed zoning regulations, and it's over two hundred pages, I have not read all that. It is indeed a very impressive document with all the detail that it provides on various specs, et cetera. I just find it hard to believe that with all the work that went into this document in trying to address the growth and concerns of the public, that within weeks of approval, we are already considering changes. It makes me wonder what the reason for doing this was in the first place. We need to look at the big picture, which I believe was intent of the new zoning regulations, and make sure we are making the right decisions and not just looking for short-term gains. Once a building goes up, it will be there a long time, and it could destroy the look and feel of the entire neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public would like to address this issue? Seeing no one, is there anybody, any, oops, okay.
Rob Davis with Bush Construction. Again, we appreciate your consideration in this matter, and we understand that any development at this location after years of sitting empty is going to be impactful to the neighborhood. Our plans include what we feel will be have the most beneficial impact on the neighborhood. We've worked through the numbers, and in order to provide the return on investment required to support our project, a four-story structure is what is needed. Our project, while we've considered other approaches, those options all come with a greater impact to the traffic considerations, part of what we've heard. We've heard that we are vague in our descriptions and our responses to the questions regarding our project, and unfortunately, we just have to be very careful to provide responses that are a hundred percent accurate, and in some instances, that means we can only provide our best guess as to, as we haven't worked through our final design considerations yet. We've expended considerable effort and resources, short of six figures, in market studies, in lawyer fees, and drafting agreements, and design fees to come up with our schematic design to date, but we just don't have all of the answers that the people have asked today. Those questions are, and concerns are not unreasonable, and many are actually some of the same issues and questions that we have worked through when we consider a project of this nature. The fact is, we simply haven't progressed far enough in our design to answer all of those questions completely. We've been careful, or rather, we've questioned, been questioned about the existing berms, trees, and locations, we hadn't had our survey done, we didn't know exactly the locations of those, the berm to the north, we actually would be well in favor of maintaining that and actually improving that. We need to receive the appropriate zoning approval to proceed with our project. Unfortunately, we've recently become aware also of a similar cooperative development that it's going to be constructed in Bettendorf, so for us, of course, time is of the essence, now more than ever. We hope to gain the approval necessary so that we can finish our design and showcase a wonderful new development here in Davenport. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Prakash Bantu, I live at five-nine-zero-six Utica Ridge Road, right across where the development is going to be happening, and I live next door to Larry, who just spoke earlier, and I echo with all the concerns that he said, the height of the building, the traffic, the water runoff, and the look, all these are big concerns, and I think, like he said, the developing people have a lot of interest in it, in their land, but for the neighborhood, it is not a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Sue Gable, and we border the property, and I thank you for the opportunity to be able to share with you guys tonight.
Could you pull the microphone down a little bit, too?
Everybody else is taller than me? Well, all right then, you guys, and I, we have been talking to the zoning commission, Matt, and we've visited with him several times on this, and it's, this is not a transitional property, this is, it is, it is three sides of residential housing, and they want to put in a four-story building, it just, it's huge, that, the building itself is huge, and it just doesn't fit in, you've come along there, you've got low properties all around it, even coming up Fifty-S sixth Street, the properties, you've got the neurology group, these are all one-story properties, and now they want to come in with a four-story property. I'm sorry if anybody, anybody looks at that with any type of, you know, you don't have to be an interior designer to get it, it's, it's just out of place, I'm sorry, it's just out of place. We understood when we brought, bought the property that it was CO, which, you know, we knew at any point, or at some point, that that land was going to be developed. This isn't, and I'm not against development of any sort, but I am against a four-story building being put up there. The CO would allow for a twenty-five foot, I understand that the zoning would change to a CT if, if all remains that way, which allow for a thirty-five foot building, I don't have a problem with a thirty-five foot building if that's what we have to go to, but anything larger than that, an R-five M is just not even reasonable for that area, so, thank you, I appreciate being able to share that.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else has anything from the public?
My name is Mary Southwick, and I live at forty-twenty East Fifty-Ninth Street, and I happen to be Larry's wife. One of the things I would like to address is, is the notification process. Our household was notified of last Wednesday's council meeting by mail because we were within two hundred feet of the proposed rezoning changes, and this was the first time that I became aware of these proposed changes. Part of it may have been my fault, we are retired, and we have the freedom to travel, and we were gone for almost a month. We didn't use the phone, texting, email, or Facebook during that time. When I looked at the letter, I saw that our property was about one of the three properties bordering the proposed rezoning changes. We happened to be in the Lakers subdivision on the west side, and Lakers has more than two hundred and fifty households that would be directly affected because most of the residents either have to use Fifty-Ninth or Sixty-first Street off of Utica Ridge to get into their homes. After I attended the council meeting, I was, or I contacted the Lakers secretary, and I asked her to post my newly found information, as well as six ward aldermen Clul's phone number and email address, so that the Lakers community could, could give their input to these possible changes. I also tried to find out the board members of the Crow Valley Villas on the east side of the property to inquire if that entire community had been notified, because they would be traveling on Fifty-Eighth and Sixtieth Street off of Utica Ridge to get to their homes. Finally, I met with our neighbors on the north side of the property and found that they had been actively attending the meetings from the beginning and were against the proposal, but they were only eight households, not really enough to count. And I heard that there was little or no opposition expressed at previous meetings, but I believe many of the people in the neighboring community were not aware of these proposed changes and the impact that those changes could have on their community. It wasn't that they didn't care. If my understanding is correct, I think the surrounding community should know that the new zoning regulations, which were passed tonight, will allow a structure to be built as long as it is under thirty-five feet. If Bush's proposal for rezoning is approved, a structure up to seventy feet would be allowed. Currently, Bush is proposing a building between forty and fifty feet, and this would make it higher than the Wells Fargo Building at the corner of Fifty-third and Utica Ridge, especially because of these height differences. I think the city should deny the rezoning proposal by Bush Construction. Thank you for hearing some of my concerns.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this? Seeing no one, is there an alderman that would move the consideration? Oh, I'm sorry, yes, ma'am?
You just said a little while ago that neighborhoods are important, and neighborhoods are important. Ours has been there for thirty-five years, and we're a neighborhood of one-story condos, and one side, there's three houses, so, as everyone has said, this four-story structure is going to destroy the neighborhood, it's going to make our houses worth less, it's going to, I mean, we'll be looking out our windows at a four-story building, and the thirty-five feet, again, we're very accepting of that, but, and thank you for the rezoning committee, but we just feel like this does not fit into our neighborhood in any way, shape, or form.
Anyone else? Is there a second? There's a motion, a second, before we take your vote, is there any discussion by any alderman to have a comment? Alderman Grip.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, so looking at this proposed development, I think that the use is appropriate, a co-op, pretty high-end co-op with condos about three hundred and fifty K, I think the design, it's a nice design, I don't see typical stormwater concerns or major traffic concerns, I did bring up the Fifty-S sixth Street traffic signal potentially being warranted at some point due to all of the development that we're having off of Fifty-six there, but overall, it appears to be a good development. Now, I understand that there is one major concern that I, that I also agree with, which is the height of the development, and I understand why the neighbors would be concerned about that, and I have concerns with that myself, but I am going to, I'm going to vote yes tonight to continue this discussion, so we can talk, continue to talk with the neighbors and the developer to see if we can come to something here where we can make this development happen, but also get the neighbors a development that they want to be neighbors with. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Thank you, Alderman Grip. Alderman Clul?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I suppose every alderman is kind of proud of the constituents that they have in their ward, but I tell you what, the six ward people never cease to amaze me how articulate and passionate they are about issues in their neighborhoods. I just, I'm proud to be six ward alderman. You know, Alderman Grip brought up the point of, you know, that this is a quality development. I think it's, it's really great, the underground parking. I think there's a lot of good things about this development. The problem, of course, being the height. I don't want this council uncertain myself, myself to be in the position of approving an RMF zoning designation allowing up to 70 feet. The problem being is that I believe that Bush is intent on building a structure that is 50 feet, four-story. That's no problem. But Bush, of course, is making everything contingent on the fact that they get 80% occupancy by December or so. That might happen. I predict that it will happen. I think the market is hot right now, but it might not. If it doesn't, and if Bush were to sell that property, anybody coming in would have an RMF designation zoning, could build a 70 feet, and the council really would have very little to say about that. That would be an untenable position, as far as I'm concerned. If Bush were to successfully sell the units, 100%, the co-op owners would take over ownership of that building. There is a possibility that with two and a half acres, they could build themselves if they so chose a 70-foot building on the site. So, there's some problems there. It's not Bush's negligence, it's just that they're planning far out with this thing and trying to think ahead, so there's no fault. But that, that is a situation that I would not want this council to be in, to have approved a 70-foot height limit out in an area that is, was 25-foot up to about five minutes ago, and now is 35-foot. So, that's an important consideration. As I mentioned earlier, I am going to be holding a special community meeting to talk to folks about the issue. I want to provide some clarification. I want to listen to what they have to say in a rather much broader area than the 200-foot zone. So, Rob, I'm, I'm wondering about a couple of things, if I could ask you. Is it possible that Bush would be willing to accept in the rezoning ordinance a limitation of that building to four, four stories? I guess what I want to say is this, is if, if there were, is there a possibility that a three-story structure, 35 feet, could possibly work and, and meet the needs that you have? Is there a configuration that would work, possibly?
So far, we have not come up with one that we think, without significantly increasing the density, would meet that at three stories, but we would be open to considerations on height limitations, I think, if that's what you're proposing.
Would you, would there be a possibility that you could accept a condition in the rezoning saying that the maximum density that would be established with a 62 unit would be the tops that you could build on that property, thereby saying that that two and a half acres that is green space now would continue to be green space after the co-op is, is taken over by the owners?
Would be considered of that, absolutely.
Okay. And you would, you would then, you're, you're planning to build a four-story? You would agree then to, to limit that to four-story?
I think that's a reasonable request. We'd be able to entertain that, yes.
Okay. That's helpful. Again, I, I too will, will approve this motion, moving it forward, but I do have significant considerations, and we'll have more to say after the public meeting on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a clarification for the people that are here watching tonight. This is the first consideration, meaning there was a committed meeting, a committee of the whole meeting last week, and then this, this week. We go through that three times. So, the decision isn't made tonight, it just moves on for more discussion, potentially before a final decision is made literally four weeks from now, if it continues on this path for more discussion. So, just so you're aware of that process of this. So, let's move on. Alderman Ambrose had a comment.
Thanks, Your Honor. I concur with you, and I want to reassure the neighbors, you've got a great alderman that works really hard to, with the neighbors. We've got a developer that's got a tremendous reputation, you know. If it moves forward, we want to make sure the development's going to be a success, it's going to be a great partner with the neighborhood, and we want to do whatever we can to protect the neighborhood. So, a lot of give and take and compromise, but your alderman, you know, he's on top of it. You have the opportunity to contact the rest of the neighborhood associations out there, and, but, six weeks at a minimum, you know, we're going to be discussing this, and we always encourage the people to come on down. We've got a great, open, and transparent process at City Hall, so we hope to see you down a lot more. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Alderman Mattson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you to everyone who came, and thanks to Bush Construction, extremely respectable organization in our community. As the mayor wonderfully said, we have six weeks and three cycles of yes on it, but I am very concerned that we just went through a zoning process that took us two years and tons of community discussion, tons of input from stakeholders, tons of input from a lot of people, and now we're already, minutes later, looking at changing something we just took two years to do. I, I get the, I love the six ward alderman, Mr. Clul, in the discussion with Bush. I appreciate you having another meeting, and I'll look forward to what comes out of that and your discussion. I'll vote yes tonight, but I am very concerned that we're already going way above what we took two years to, to go through. And I know people like the third ward alderman, Alderwoman McGinnis and her folks went through every parcel. A lot of us went through every parcel. The staff went through every parcel, and to make sure it fit, and, but minutes later, we're already changing. So, I'm very concerned about that, but I look forward to your discussion. I look forward to hearing everybody's thoughts on what we can do, and I appreciate, sir, you willing to talk with everybody and see how we can work this out, because it certainly sounds like a wonderful project and that can benefit everybody's. But we got to do a little discussion here, because I'm very concerned that we're changing it in a pretty big way, minutes after we took a two-year process to make sure everything was okay. So, thank you for the discussion. I look forward to more discussion.
Thank you, Alderman Mattson. Alderman McGinnis?
Thank you, Your Honor. I too am very concerned about the fact that we just went through this rezoning and just voted on it, and now we're looking at changing this dramatically and drastically. I, I don't take this rezoning process lightly. I don't, I know that the staff didn't, and the staff worked very hard. I know that I will not vote for this tonight, and it will have to be significantly changed, significantly changed for me to support this. I would like to ask the staff, if you would please, and I don't want to put anybody on the spot, so I don't know who to ask, but talk a little bit about why this, the zoning which was proposed, which was CT, was proposed for this parcel, if you would, and your, your thought process as we were going through the rezoning. It might be useful for people to hear that and to see what you were thinking.
Bruce Berger, Community Planning and Economic Development. So, several things go into kind of the paradigm about, that we went through with looking at all those parcels, but primarily, I think the key factors here would be, what's the existing zoning? How does it compare with the existing use, which in this case, it's been undeveloped? And then, as we've mentioned to council along, the, the idea of a, a more careful, one-on-one thought process when you have not an easy decision. So, I mean, we, we did, as you've all noted, we did make some changes to our zoning map through the overall rezoning process, but we, we tried to do that with an eye toward what development should go there, what makes sense, and then if, if it fits with what the owner is looking for. In several cases, the owner said, no, 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 I don't want to change that. And so, we've said, all right, maybe it does deserve to be rechanged, but that's a decision to discuss one-on-one when, when that project comes forward. So, that is what is in front of you here, is an actual change by an owner who wants to change it. But again, I, I don't know if that totally answers your question. That kind of gives you some of the sense, excuse me, that we were looking at, at doing when we looked at the zoning code.
So, if I could further ask, so you were looking at sort of the feel of the area, you were looking at the, the existing zoning and how the area had developed around it? Was that part of?
Sure, all of those factors. In general, the CT, for those of you, and I think most councils probably are aware, is commercial transitional, designed to be that transition from a residential neighborhood to a more commercial neighborhood. And so, it has some limitations on height, on floor plate, those sorts of things. So, certainly, that, that definitely fits in, yeah.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Grip, you've got another shot.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, for a second chance to speak. I just kind of wanted to bring this up, maybe to, to remind my colleagues and, and put this out publicly, because I've heard it several times. The new, the new zoning ordinance is not going to mean that we have zero rezonings this year. I think Matt said that last year, we had 19 rezonings, and we plan to probably have that many rezonings again. It's a, it's a land plan, and sometimes plans change, markets change, and we certainly will be seeing rezonings this year, and we'll probably be seeing rezonings in February very quickly after the rezoning. So, I don't think we should jump to the, the argument that, that we're not going to, to hear out the, the rezoning requests because we just did a zoning rewrite. And I think our CPED department had made that fairly well clear throughout the process, that this is not going to take away contentious rezonings. That's not, not what this will do. And then, the other comment that I will make is that there are parcels where rezonings were requested when, when our, when our staff said in our comprehensive plan, or we want it to be this, and they objected, said, well, we would rather have this. Well, if it was contentious and, and our staff thought that we should have this discussion publicly, they said, no, you need to hold off until after we've passed the zoning, so that you can have that fair conversation with the public and the neighbors, and everyone can get their fair, their fair say. So, we will continue to have these conversations. I just want to remind everyone of that.
Thank you. Alderman, Alderman Grip? Alderman Rossen?
Actually, I was going to make some of the same commentary Kyle did. I just wanted to remind everyone that, yes, we just did a zoning update that took two years in the process of getting that done, but the zoning ordinance is not hard and fast. It is a guideline. So, we change zoning all the time, definitely since I've been on council, so that's not unusual. And just because we have this one case that, that seems to be a dramatic shift, does not mean we need to have a knee-jerk reaction and suddenly, oh, my gosh, we just did two years of zoning, and what's going on? If the trend continues throughout the year, then it's something to really take a closer look at, but one case is not a knee-jerk reaction to, to be too alarmed about it. This is a normal process. This will take six weeks. So, for everyone that came out this evening, look forward to having you back next week to continue making your points, and I'm very interested in hearing how your neighborhood meeting goes on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Rossen. Alderman Mattson?
Thank you for letting me speak again. A lot of people are trying to say is we should take everything into consideration. Nobody's saying anything about a knee-jerk reaction. Just like you and anybody else makes their opinions known, that's wonderful. We want everybody's opinion, and I think everybody agreed that because of what Alderman Clul is doing, bringing people together and having more conversations is wonderful. But we did have a big process here. Don't, don't, and to, put my comments anywhere into what you think I'm talking about. We all make our comments, and we all respect each other, and so we shouldn't be accusing each other of doing certain things. You make your comments, and we'll make ours, and we'll have a great conversation, but be careful about saying what you think we mean about something. We don't do that with you, so don't do that with us.
Alderman Clul?
Just to put a little positive spin on the whole thing, we had a joint meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission yesterday, something that we're going to be doing with all our commissions and, and boards throughout the year. But Mayor Klipch asked Bob Ingram, the chairman of Plan and Zoning, he said, you know, what could you do that's proactive? And kind of puzzled around about that a little bit, and said, well, you know, really, this, this work that we've done with the zoning ordinance, hopefully, will bring up to date a lot of, a lot of situations that have been livery-stable type of situations for a long time. So, I anticipate that there will be less skirmishes about zoning issues. That's my anticipation. Call me a glass-half-full kind of guy, but I think that this zoning ordinance is going to help us all work through these issues, perhaps with less of these zoning requests that we've seen in the past. So, there's my nickels' worth.
Thank you very much. Again, I would think, as we said, this is a six-week process. It takes a while to get through all the information. I think everyone has, and I applaud my colleagues for being thoughtful about what they're looking at. I didn't sense any comparison to individuals' ideas, but I think it's important that we all voice those and then find out the best answer for everyone. So, with that in mind, we're looking at a first consideration, and we'd like the roll call, please, on this one.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Tomkins?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Nope.
Clul?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
And Ambrose?
Yes.
Eight yeses, Your Honor?
Thank you very much. Again, that will now move to the second consideration, which is another two-week process, so just so you're aware of that. Our third item is resolution adopting the city's, City of Davenport's 2019 state legislative program. Does anybody from the public want to speak on this? Hearing none, seeing none? Will an alderman move the resolution? It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion from any alderman? Alderman Mattson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to draw a slight attention to number five, our fireworks discussion. As, as the state continues to move and, and address this, I applaud our staff for wanting to have, still have local control and city control and decide where things can go and not, and I applaud you for bringing that up. And I ask all of my colleagues, with your contacts with different legislatures, whatever party they are, to please stress that local control is important, and we need to have a say on where things go and how they happen. And so, I ask everyone here to please have conversations with your local officials at the state level to do that, because I think it's very important that we have local control and we have a say in where things go. Thank you.
Yeah, and to add to that very quickly, I think we have committed as a group to make an effort to do on all of these items, talk with the state, make sure they know our position, and we've got a good team of staff that are helping us guide that process. So, with no other discussion, will the clerk call the roll, please?
Rossen?
Yes.
Tomkins?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Clul?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
And Condon?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor?
Thank you, and that resolution is adopted. We now have, thank you. Is there's a motion and a second on the consent agenda? Second? Roll call, please. Oh, sorry. Alderman Mattson?
Thank you, Your Honor, for letting me speak. I'd like to take number 10 off just first. I thank people here to quickly make a couple of points, then I'll, as soon as they're done, I'll ask that it be put back on, if that's okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, I'll ask that number 10 be taken off, if anybody would like to discuss that particular. It's the reference to Hawkeye Paving? None? Okay. Do you want? That's what I thought, so I'm going to let people talk, if it's okay, Mayor, and then I'll just ask to put it right back on.
Good evening. Good evening. Mark Fries, Davenport resident, fire service employee for 37 years, the city of Davenport last 10 as chief. The better part of my career, we spent many, many, or looked at many opportunities to develop a training center, because a couple of things came into play, that the environmental issues that we dealt with, we used to burn down houses for training. We were prevented from doing that, or we had to do so much before we were allowed to burn, that there wasn't much left of the house. So, we, we budgeted some money for a training center. The training center was funded. Sky Community College contacted us with a offer by Roy Carver, who, who made it well, well-known that he was willing to provide some property for the community college, for us to build this training center out there. As any joint, I won't say operation, joint opportunity that we had, we had to look out for our interests. Our interests were, there was 33 acres, I believe, on, on the property. The property at that particular time was assessed at 3-point-some million dollars. Mr. Carver was willing to give it to the college for 1.2 million dollars. But... was willing to give it to the college for one-point-two million dollars. But the stipulation was that they couldn't sell it for any more than what he gave it, because it was a pretty good deal, because he donated some property that had some significant value. At that particular time, it was agreed upon by him and all the parties involved, that the city of Davenport would have the first right of refusal, if in fact the college got out of that relationship. I was kind of shocked the other day when I saw that the training center was for sale, for two reasons. Number one, why would you sell a building that you worked so long to get, spent many years putting in the capital improvement budget, and now suddenly we're going to sell it? And the second thing that really floored me is that it was offered to one company. I mean, if you're going to sell a building, at least you would think you could get what you have into the project, which is somewhere close to a million bucks. That we heard that the process is already in order for a new training center. Well, we heard that for like twenty-five years. So I'm not saying it won't happen a lot quicker than that. It's a heck of a process to have enough property to develop something that is functionally workable for what you have. If the college wanted to get out of that place out of there, to offer the city that, you could have done wonderful things, because we weren't subject to that maximum one-point-five million. We could have subdivided it, sold part of it off, whatever the case might be. But how that, how they decided that the college either didn't offer it to the city and sold to Hawkeye, I don't know, but it seems kind of odd. Some people would say I'm a little senile every once in a while, so I called all the people I was with. Former Alderman Large, Gene Meeker, was one of the individuals. In fact, he facilitated a lot of the conversations that we had about that, and hammered out this agreement over several months. And we thought it was a great opportunity, because we finally had a place where we could indoor training, we could have classes, and it's just so much better than what we had before, because we were still in the old central fire station. So why suddenly give up something that had such a value to it? And then, when you get rid of it, even though you have the building, you still have access to the building. You know, you've taken away a lot of that functional area where the other props were, so that they could do some different training evolutions, high-rise training, chemical training, all kinds. I mean, endless of what they could do out there, far greater than what we ever had before. So I'm curious why it got to this point. I'm curious how, you know, that we suddenly said, "Hey, this is only worth this now, and then we're going to sell it," because right now, even to replace it, you're two-hundred-and-some-thousand dollars in the hole what we spent before. So I thought it was a huge opportunity. We signed the deal originally, because the college was, "Yeah, if we don't want it, you guys get first chance at it." So I don't know how it came to this. I'm just bringing that to your attention. I thought we had a pretty good deal, a pretty safe deal, and that for us, hey, if you're going to sell the property, fine. But you know, sell a billing out there that nobody else gets a bid on, except for one guy, to me, doesn't what you call them good stewards of the city taxpayer dollar, for taking a loss on a really nice building. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Go ahead.
Sorry. So thank you. I just wanted to make sure everybody understands, we still have the buildings. We'll still train there for a while. And then there's a commitment from our staff that we are going to make sure that this is, these places go, and we have a place for a fire to tank. But it was a fair for people to hear the history of this, because I remember this, and it was a big deal. Thank you. So I'll put it back on, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. It's now, it's back on the agenda of our consent agenda. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Clule?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
And Rossen?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor?
Thank you very much. We're now going to move... Are there any other ordinance resolutions or motions this evening? Seeing none, we're going to move to public with business, just as a clarification. This is a listening session on our part. We don't respond. We take information and move forward. So is there... And again, we limit your comments to five minutes. So anyone would like to say something? Identify yourself and your address, please.
Ron Swainer, 2366 West Forty-seventh. Summits, meetings, what to do about our youth. We got a partial answer, but it's not the full answer. We can't just start up a new agency to coordinate. We have multiple agencies out here that deal with some of the services. Let's enhance what we have. You start from scratch, you're looking at years, folks. But I gave you last December the million-dollar challenge. People look at me, "You're nuts." No, I'm not. Our police department resources are being taken away. They're doing the best they can. But whatever program you decide, whatever you want to do, is going to take a long time. Enhancement of our police department, it's not arresting out of the situation. It's enhancing our officers' abilities to do their job and to keep the officers here. We just put in two batches out of the academy. Well, to me, good things come in threes. Why not expand what we have? The chief says we're up to where we should be. No, we're not. We're below where we should be. Because of the situation, what's going on with our youth, we have to enhance our department, so we can make it as a deterrent. If you make a mistake, you are going to pay a price. But to say we need just to set up an agency to coordinate everyone, regardless, that's not the full answer. The full answer is, everything this city council has, it must put forward to make this a safer city, a city people want. Look at Eldridge, look at Leclerc, look at Princeton, look at all the areas around us, how much they're expanding. Citizen safety, yes, we have a lot of amenities, but if you don't feel safe here, the citizens getting their cars ripped off, even I forgot to lock a door, I lost a snowblower, just because I forgot one time. I have a video of the guy taking it, nice and clear. You think it's going to be recovered? No. No. To enhance what we have, our departments, a chief that busts his butt, a department that is busting their butts, let's keep them here. We have some of the brightest and the best of the best. But if you're overworked, undertrained, understaffed, additional equipment's not there, additional training, we're losing them, folks. We need to keep them here. We need to say, "This is our city. We're going to be safer." But we got to give them the resources. The answers of starting to coordinate everything to help with the youth, even the stories the chief tells, even the stories I've heard mentoring, "He's doing great." All of a sudden, boom, it's done. The success rate is not going to be a hundred percent. I'll be happy if we get fifty percent. But you have to be able to feel safe and to give your department and your officers, when you're pulling two or three of them off the street, there's still got to be enough there to cover, to where the kids are going to say, "Hey," you know, "If it stops ten percent, twenty percent, is it worth it? Well, did you have your building run into and caused several hundred thousand dollars of damage? Did you have to pay several hundred dollars to get your stolen car back?" This is hurting the people of Davenport, folks, you know? Thousands and thousands and hundreds of thousands of dollars damaged between property and the vehicles, you know, and the court systems and everything. We need to invest. That million-dollar challenge was not a joke. That was me being very serious to you as a council, the city administrator, the city as a whole. We need to enhance our department even more. The summits and everything, I'm very grateful for the mayor and his time and everyone here. That is part of the solution. But the other part lays back here in the department, that we need to keep the best of the best. And if we don't, we're going to turn this cycle around, we're going to have more going through. If we're at capacity, let's say whatever it is, I think we need to enhance it by four, six, eight. I would love to see eight more officers on the street. So when we have to pull those two officers to deal with juvenile, or whatever, that we still have enough manpower on the street. The deterrent, as I grew up, "Hey, the cops are out there," you know, "hey," you know, it was a lot different. But what you're talking about now, with this studies and everything else, is values, morals. But ultimately, it's called respect. And that's something you cannot legislate, that's something you cannot force on somebody. But you have to show them through mentoring. Other programs, yes. But it also has to have a deterrent and a... How do I word this? You're going to get your butt kicked in the seat of pants if you caught. We've got to work with the state legislature, the county attorney, you know? No, we can't arrest our way out of this, but we have to have a stronger police department as a deterrent, why this is being taken on, you know? So the million-dollar challenge is not a joke to me, folks. It's what this city needs. It's what we as citizens demand of you as our people.
Sir, sir, your time was up.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Can you just wrap it, please?
I didn't hear it. I'll be back, folks. I don't go away. And...
Thank you.
I'm sure you all realize that by now. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? You've got to give that all through the clerk. Yeah.
Mayor, council. My name is Dylan Parker. I am a Quad Citizen and resident of the city of Rock Island, across the river from us. I am here representing the organization for whom I work, the Indiana-Illinois-Iowa Foundation for Fair Contracting, nonprofit organization that works in partnership with construction contractors and labor groups to advocate to raise the standard in the public infrastructure industry. I'm here to talk in five minutes about the Iowa Department of Transportation's Federal Aid Swap Program. I'm coming here today. A number of weeks ago, a number of construction contractors and I met with Mayor Klipch to discuss this issue, and we understand that there are some internal conversations going on right now. So we wanted to come here tonight to just provide education on what the federal aid swap program is. In 2017, the Governor Branstad signed into law granting the Iowa Department of Transportation the approval to create a federal aid swap program. In 2018, the Iowa Department of Transportation created their federal aid swap program. Now, what that does is it authorizes metropolitan planning organizations in our community, that's the ByState Regional Commission, to essentially take the federal dollars that our community gets from the federal government for infrastructure, give them, the Iowa Department of Transportation, those federal dollars, and in exchange, to a one-to-one ratio, the Iowa Department of Transportation gives the ByState Commission state dollars. Now, the significance with this is that federal dollars include a number of requirements that Iowa state dollars do not, namely, Federal Davis Bacon Act wages, prevailing wage attachments, disadvantaged business enterprise requirements, environmental study requirements, Buy American Steel requirements for public infrastructure improvements. We have been involved with the ByState Regional Commission, and have been working with their Quad Cities Policy Committee to advocate to opt out of participating in this program. The Iowa DOT program, by default, all MPOs, Metropolitan Planning Organizations, which ByState is, automatically are participating in this federal aid swap program. The MPO can choose to opt out, and it needs to be an active action, it's not just passive. So we have been working with the representatives from each of our Quad City communities, encouraging them to opt out of participating in the Iowa Department of Transportation's federal aid swap program. For the city of Davenport, you have three representatives on the MPO's Policy Committee, Mayor Klipch, Alderman Ray Ambrose, and Alderman Kerry Tomkins. We are here tonight to simply talk about this issue, educate the council. In our conversations with Mayor Klipch, you mentioned about how you wanted to refer to the council. And so I appreciate your willingness to hear from the other Aldermen on your council. But we wanted to make sure that everybody understood what this program is. So by not opting out, the projects that previously received federal dollars, that will no longer be having federal dollars attached to them, are going to be absent of things like prevailing wage, that helps support our local economy, that keeps good contractors that pay good wages able to work here in Davenport and the Quad Cities. It removes the Buy American requirement, meaning that when the construction contractors need to manufacture a steel component for infrastructure improvement, they're no longer going to be coming to a Davenport steel manufacturer and hiring them to fabricate the piece of equipment. They're going to buy it from China or elsewhere. The environmental requirements, the DBE, we will no longer have incentives to hire minority, women, disadvantaged-owned businesses. We believe that these are all important things to have included in the contracts, in the bid specifications. And so we encourage you to work with your representatives to the ByState Regional Commission Policy Committee to opt out. I was just here to explain what the program is. I believe there are a number of other representatives from different organizations that are interested in this project as well. I will cede the floor to them. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Jerry Lack. I'm the director of the Tri-City Building Trades Council, and I'm here tonight representing the over eight thousand members of the Tri-City Building Trades. Just want to briefly follow up on the previous speaker. Dylan did a good job of summarizing what the road swap program is. Currently, the Quad Cities Transportation Improvement Program for fiscal year 2018 through 2021 designates two roads in Davenport for the federal aid swap program. That's 53rd Street Improvements from Brady Street to Elmore Circle, estimated at a cost of around eight or nine million dollars, and First Street with Leclerc Road Intersection, about a three-million-dollar project. Under the road swap program, these two projects would not include the Davis Bacon prevailing wage requirements, and also the Buy American Steel requirements. In addition to those two projects, the city of Bettendorf has, under that 2018 to 21 Improvement Program, Forest Grove Drive, a six-million-dollar project, and there's two projects in the city of Muscatine as well. So that's a total of five road projects that prior to the creation of this road swap program would have required payment of prevailing wage and Buy American Steel, and now they do not. So instead, they take those federal dollars, they'll move them to the Interstate Seventy-four Bridge, which is already millions of dollars of federal funding involved, and it requires those provisions. Now, prevailing wage ensures that the construction jobs funded by taxpayer dollars are actually paid, the employees receive decent pay wages and good benefits. And what happens is they take those wages and good benefits, and they spend them in your community. They go buy a house, they visit the auto dealers, they buy a car, they visit your retail establishments, your restaurants. That money circulates throughout your economy, creating good-paying jobs and creating more jobs in the community. Under the road swap program, again, that Iowa DOT will use their bid process, that does not include the prevailing wage and Buy American Act. And so the ByState Policy Transportation Committee, as Dylan mentioned, can opt out of this program. It was already previously done in Johnson County and Iowa City area. They opted out of it and did not want to participate with these provisions. So I hope the whole city council will have a discussion and weigh in on this important issue, again, with your representatives on the ByState Transportation Policy Committee, Mayor Klipch, and council members Ambrose and Tomkins. They'll be able to vote on this issue on January 22nd, if you put it on the agenda. I would close just again by reiterating that opting out of the road swap program will ensure that the workers and contractors receive prevailing wage on these important road improvement projects. And furthermore, you will not be encouraging out-of-town contractors to come to this area who pay low wages and get these projects. So again, I appreciate... who pay low wages and get these projects. So again, I appreciate your consideration in the coming weeks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please, again, name and address, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Ryan Drew. I serve as a business representative with operating engineers here in the Quad Cities. I represent seven of our Iowa counties up and down the river. I personally reside in Burlington, Iowa. I wanted to speak to you tonight. You've heard two previous speakers about the federal aid swap program and what we consider the negative effects of this program. I wanna try and drill down a little more in what this actually means and numbers for our community. You know, when the DOT, Iowa Department of Transportation, put this presentation together, and they were asked about the negative aspects of it to our local community, they were kind of lost to, to come up with anything. Well, I'm here to say that there is real effects to the community, and we want to showcase that. One thing that they had proclaimed was there was 20 other states that participated in this federal aid swap. And in talking to our international representatives out in DC, they explained, yes, there is 20 other states that participate in it, but there's states like Oregon and others, Wisconsin, that have a state prevailing wage. So this law does not eliminate the wage protection for local workers. So in some states, this may be a great thing. It's, it is a relief on the city. But in Iowa, it's at the cost of local community and local workers. When you look at what this program's gonna do, you can certainly dispute the facts that I'm gonna present tonight, but I will bring your attention to the Legislative Service Agency's fiscal note on this exact bill, where in three different places, they note they're unable to determine the fiscal impact of the shift. So then themselves, before they voted on this, did not know what the fiscal impact of this bill would be on local communities or in the state of Iowa. What I want to showcase is what we think is the fiscal impact on it. I'm gonna show several, or talk about several examples. May 15th, 2018, Scott County, asphalt resurfacing. No prevailing wage was attached on this project. Brant Construction was awarded the project just over a million dollars. What I consider a responsible contractor, McCarthy Improvement participates in apprenticeship programs, health insurance, pension, retirement, safety training. They were $100,000 more. So you start putting that in perspective. When I look at the numbers that I use, and you'll see in those packets, they determine, the rough estimate is 25% to 30% of a project is labor. I went on the conservative side, let's use the 25% number. Then when you look at what the average non-union pay rate is on a project where there is no wage protections and versus the union full contract, including a wage, pension, apprenticeship, training, all those things, the number I come up with is 34%. They paying 34% of what the prevailing wage is in state Iowa. So when you start doing those numbers, and you take this asphalt resurfacing project, the Scott County or the community lost out $190,000, $190,961. If we spent $100,000 more, we would've got $190,000 more in return. Go to the next project, asphalt resurfacing. Again, this is awarded to an out-of-town, what we consider unresponsible contractor. In this case, if there was prevailing wage or a support for the local contractor, we would've spent 8% more, which would be roughly $200,000. We would've got a return of $434,000 and $146, or, sorry, $434,146 return on our investment. We go down to August 24th, 2018, PCC Shoulder, that's New Concrete Shoulder. Again, no prevailing wage attached to this project. There was a difference of $2,000 on a $245,000. If, if we would've went ahead and spent that 0.7% to get a responsible contractor, the community lost out on $40,000, $40,836. If we would've spent $2,000 more, we could've got $40,836 in return. Fast forward, bridge deck repair. Low bidder out of town from Des Moines. Again, no prevailing wage attached to this project. We would've spent $30,000, we would've got $189,940 in return. I, I don't think anybody will dispute the return on this, whether this affects local workers and local contractors. Out of 11 projects that, and this is all from the DOT's website, it's public information. I went back three years looking at projects. 11 projects that didn't have prevailing wage. That was prior to the swap, so this was off federal aid roads or whatever the case might be. 11 projects, only two of those went to local signatory contractors, local companies here that participate in our training programs. Out of the six projects that did have prevailing wage, all six went to local Quad City contractors. Those, those facts, I think, speak a lot, and they speak for themselves. One thing, I know my time's up. The impact of this project in the next, or this program in the next three years, $27 million in work. We do the math, community stands to lose out on $6.7 million in local workers' wages, apprenticeship funding, and retirement plans. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak to this, or speak to a topic? Not limited to just this, but just a topic.
My name's Jim Hain. I live in, I live in Leclerc, which is part of this district for the transportation. And we're a contractor. I'm a Vice President of General Constructors. And I'm not here to talk to you about how great unions are or anything else. I'm here to talk to you about the fact that the people who work for us, over 90% of them are right here in the Quad Cities. Now, the last four projects that were led in our business that did not have a wage determination were done by somebody from Des Moines. Did they bring, did they hire local people? No. They brought in people from Des Moines. Now, the last four that I can count that did have a wage determination on them were all local people, and they hired local people. If you take a look at what's going on over on the I-74 Bridge right now, all those people over there bring in, even though they're out-of-towners, they might bring in 20%, but 80% of the workers over there are local. Okay, so what does that mean to us? It means that, like they said earlier, they buy cars, they buy groceries. The other thing is, they own homes here. Our schools are paid with the taxes that come off of those homes. The, you're paid by it, by the taxes that come off of those homes. So we want to keep the jobs local, and that's the, the main thing for us. You gotta remember, there's a quality of life that's required here in the Quad Cities. That's it. We, I'd say we require it. We want to have quality of life. And if we start niggling-diming construction workers to, so they don't have a quality of life, we're doing a disservice to the people who you represent. I want to thank you for taking time to listen to me. Our company certainly has done work for you and hope to continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak this evening? Any, on any topic, public with business topic?
Mayor, Council, Dave Kenny. I'm in the third ward, second ward, sorry. I'm here to rehash a couple of things I talked about before. I did have a chance to look at the video. Bear with me. The man that was killed by the Scott, Scott County Sheriff, that did happen in Davenport, so it's not directly related to our police force, but hopefully this can be a lesson for Davenport Police Force. I looked at the video, it's available at wqad.com. And it's hard to see, but it looked like what happened was, it comes from a body camera of another officer who was approaching the scene, and Officer Hill was attempting to arrest this Robert Mitchell, and when he turned around, he decided to dive in the car and get out of there, and that was his first mistake. Now, at that deci, now at that time, Officer Hill had a decision to make to let him go, cut his losses, or, or try to arrest him. He made a decision, he was not gonna let him go. And that's when the struggle started, and the car backed up once, and he was backpedaling the officer and his, I mean, he was endangering himself because he was trying to stop him, but he had decided he was gonna stop him. And then the second time, as he backed up, as he pulled out his revolver and shot him three times and killed him. Well, didn't kill him on spot, it was, he died later. The other officer there, that the body camera was, told him to get out of there, but he didn't do it. I mean, he decided he was gonna try to stop the guy. That was his decision. I don't know if I agree with that. It was, he was, he was looting felony, wanted, he had failure to appear for felony looting in the state of Indiana and felony drug charge, and he had a failure to appear, so he had a warrant for his arrest. So that, knowing that, I guess, I looked at it a little more carefully, and a lesson for the Davenport Police Department is you get somebody like that who's maybe on drugs, had a history of looting. If you look at the video, he left the guy standing by his back fender at the driver's side with his car door open, so he could easily jump in there. I would've never done that if I was the officer. He left the keys in the, I guess they were in the car, because it looked like he jumped in and took right off. The officer could've taken the keys out of the car. That would've been another thing that maybe would've forced him to either fight the officer or be arrested. So that can be a lesson for our police department, I think, to look at, and I don't think it was any standard procedure, what you do. Sometimes you see it on cop shows where they arrest them back by the trunk also. But that's something, I wanted to tell you that I did see it, and it's unfortunate, but it was a decision a police officer made. All right, so that's that. The other thing I wanted to talk about, I don't want to be known as the legal weed guy, but you know what the fine is and the penalty is for possession of marijuana in the state of Iowa? It's like up to, like, a year in prison and up to $6,000 fine. We have one of the most strict marijuana laws in the country. Michigan just passed legalized marijuana. You can't do it, I know, but you can decriminalize it in the city of Davenport, like the city of Rock Island has done. And this would generate revenue for the city, because some of the fines, like in Chicago, which they've decriminalized it, have pretty hefty fines for possession of marijuana, but it's not a criminal charge in the, as, like, is in Iowa. Yeah, I think it's six months to two years in Iowa and $1,000 to $6,250 for possession of any amount in Iowa. And the article that I'm trying to email to everybody, I got it to Alderman at large, but not the rest of you. It's from the Iowa City Press, and so if you see an article, you can, you can read it and see what you think of it. And this article says, "These laws are being used to racially discriminate by incarcerating nonwhite people in disproportionate numbers. Whites and nonwhites, rates of marijuana use are the same." I think that's something we should look at the next year, and I'm trying to get together with some people to give you some ideas on things to think about, or maybe to work on in the next year. And just a heads up, one of them will be Better Roads. Thank you.
Anyone else with a comment?
Alan McWilliams, first ward. I just wanted to let you guys all know that I will be competing in the Winter Olympics up in Dubuque this coming Monday through Wednesday. Myself and my teammates are, will be competing in snowshoeing and speed skating, and I've been selected to help with opening ceremonies, and I've been asked to run with the torch. So I just wanted to let you guys all know.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one. Is there any other reports of city officials seeing none? Is there a motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.